So in our opinion, these statements do present fairly the results of the district Clearwater for the year ended December 31st, 2019. With that, we'll move to your statement of financial position, so snapshot of all the assets and liabilities for the year. And we saw an increase in your financial assets from 4.2 million to 6.5 million. A large chunk of that was 1.5 million received from the Community Forest Commission, but there also was a bit of a surplus from operations, which was used to transfer into reserves, reserve funds such as gas tax reserve, fire truck replacement reserve, road reserve, and those items there. So there was money retained by the district. When we look at the total liabilities, they did go up from 1.18 million to 1.3 million. And the reason why we saw an increase in your liabilities, including your debt, was there were two grants, the World Incentive Fund, and then also an economic development grant, that those projects did not complete in the year. So that money is sitting in deferred revenue to be spent in future periods. But if we look at all the financial assets you have, less the liabilities that you have, you did have a strong increase of 2.5 million to 4.6 million this year, so $2 million increase. And again, 1.5 was Community Forest Commission, and half a million that was able to go into the reserves and into your unrestricted surplus. And when we look at your total revenues this year, this chart breaks down all your different revenues with, starting with the blue versus budget. The middle column is your actuals for 2019 versus the right column in 2018. And total revenues were 6.9 million versus last year at 7.2 million and a budget of 5.5 million. And you can see here, your government transfers is where we saw the big drop from this year versus last year. Last year, there was a lot more capital projects such as septicage that were in play, and so those projects didn't recur this year. So we saw, that's why you had such a large decrease this year versus last year in your overall revenue. When we look over here, we see that under donation revenue, there was a large increase versus the budget in last year. And again, that comes to the Community Forest Commission. The budget was 500,000, 1.5 was brought in, so that's why we saw the large increase there. And we also see that, you know, of that 6.8 million, we'll break it down, 2.6, so a third of it is relied on property taxation. So again, very important number for you to manage on an ongoing basis. When we look at the expense side again, you had total expenses of 4 or 5.7 million versus last year of 5 million and $6.5 million budget. Overall, there weren't a lot of deviations from budget on the expenses with the exception of general government, which again comes to the Community Forest Commission. There was less pushed out into the community than was expected this year. And so, but when we remove that, everything else was very tight in terms of what was planned. There were some deviations up and down, but nothing too, too out of line when it comes to looking at your budget. And then this next slide just breaks down where, when we talk about that 5.8 million, 2.6 million is operating expenses, salaries and wages wake up 1.5 million, another 1.5 million is the amortization and the depreciation of your physical assets. And when we come to what is your annual surplus, you came in at 1.2 million versus a budgeted deficit for accounting purposes of $980,000. And as a reminder, there's a very big difference between your accounting budget surplus versus your budget bylaw, because budget bylaw allows you to deduct things like your capital projects, which is an expense on the budget bylaw, not in your financial statements. So when we look at this page, this is a reconciliation of how did you do against your budget, really? And so we start with your annual surplus of 1.2 million, deduct your capital projects of 640,000, add back amortization, which is noncash, and it comes to a net change in your net financial assets of $2 million. And when we look at that, we know that 1.5 million is money received from Community Forest Commission, which is restricted for those purposes. So we really had a surplus of about $500,000, which we talked about was used to pay down your debt and used to fund the reserves that we talked about earlier. Again, those types of items are things that are expensed in your budget bylaw, and so we can see that even though we had an accounting surplus still, it was because of your reserves, which is expected. And when we speak of the reserves, we have, first, we're going to talk about your accumulated surplus. And so we have, this is the wealth that you have in the community. How much retained wealth in hard assets and financial assets do you have? 39.2 million is what you have. Of that, 33.9 is your investments in your tangible capital assets, so that's the wealth that you have in your home, in your community. It's all what you've spent on infrastructure since day one, less the related debt that's still outstanding, so 33.9 million. You have 1.3 million in unrestricted between general water and sewer funds that is able to be used by management in future periods, and then you have reserve funds of $4 million. And this next slide just talks about, here's where your reserve funds are. And again, we talked about items like fire truck replacement going up, road reserve going up. The Community Forest Commission makes up half of the reserve fund. Gas tax reserve also increased this year. It was 114,000 last year, 349 this year, because funding increased this year as well. And so with that, very quick tour of the financial statements, but I just wanted to open it up to any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Mr. Roddy? Aye, now, Councilor Sim, you're not on video, any questions? Councilor McKenzie, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you, Mario.
Okay, thank you. Yes, for the record, the general public council was able to give us in a previous meeting and ask some questions in that one as well. We've already seen this once, they've had all of our major inquiries answered, but overall there wasn't anything that came out of it. Any questions that the regional conservative council and Councilor Sim?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, Mayor Blackwell, the fact that I wonder, thank you very much for answering the question about what some other councils are doing, you know, in your area. And I'm glad that council has, our council has addressed some of those and looking ahead about what our contingency might need and how you balance that.
Yeah, and definitely like to thank staff for the excellent work on this. We have a clean audit, you know, and yeah, a lot of work, and I think it's the first one that I can remember here that hasn't had any conditions or anything to do with, in the past, we've had those like contaminated sites with the District of Clearwater homes and little things like that, but yay, good stuff. Okay, moving on, thank you, Mario, for your time.
Thank you, Mario.
No delegations, mayor's report, not a lot happening last couple of weeks, agenda setting, a few other things, mostly just trying to face things in the time of COVID-19. Worked with Ms. Gru on the work plan, had a meeting with hospital, not much new going on there, there's a bit of a holding pattern. Seem to be happy to have a little bit of a lull in things, and obviously the news with the COVID curve in DC is definitely helping out what they're trying to do with planning and getting ahead of things. So, sent in a couple of calls with Mr. Selena Robinson, I expect this week's one on Thursday, have a lot of information in regards to how DC is opening up, especially after Dr. Bonnie Henry's statements yesterday on the weekend, and apparently the Dr. Bonnie Henry show today is the one to listen to. Moving on to council reports, Councilor Baffert.
Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Kind of not too much happening, but on April 23rd, I did attend a virtual Interior Health Town Hall with Susan Brown, the CEO of Interior Health, and Sue Pollak, Chief Medical Officer. It's about an hour long, and it was some pretty interesting stuff coming out of it, I guess, more for information. They did change some of the criteria for COVID-19 as far as symptoms go, where they do testing, they expanded some of it that wasn't on the criteria before. They figured that there would be a flu system, flu thing this fall, a normal one, and there could be another second wave. Apparently in Kamloops, there's a Kamloops urgent case, case center. If you really need to see a doctor, there's someplace in Kamloops you could actually get ahold of, and they would arrange for you to be able to see a doctor. No surgeries are happening in the hospital there, mostly because of COVID, and they want to make sure that they have space in case there is a greater outbreak. They don't have any idea when that normal surgery might start again. They feel there will be no large events or fairs for the next two months. And there's another site that was, I took a look at, kind of called the BC Center for Disease Control, but apparently you can get the daily statistical analysis of where different COVID-19 cases are happening. So we spent about an hour doing that, spent about an hour looking at the work plan that was sent out to draft, and I just want to say, it's amazing the amount of work that we've already completed. I think people don't realize, and even we don't sometimes, on how many things we actually are involved in, we get done. Great job, I think, doing it. I think given the mandatory and the in-progress stuff, staff have plenty to do. I compliment staff for what they are getting done, and I'm really comfortable with the stuff that's been put on hold or moved to a different year, and that's pretty much my opinion.
Thank you, Councilor Baffert. Moving on to Councilor Frizzle.
Yeah, I am going to be meeting with the Interior Community Services on Thursday, a Zoom meeting with a bunch of people, and they're talking about funding for seniors that are being affected by COVID-19. So there could be some funding coming in to help do grocery shopping and all that kind of thing, and just doing extra things for seniors. I always had a discussion with people at, the doctors have been given my name and number to get their patients to contact me to do the shopping and picking up meds and stuff, and I've got a few calls on that. They also asked if I could get out to the seniors that they are taking appointments and they are having meeting, that they are really wanting the seniors to come in and maintain their health issues. It doesn't have to be about COVID, it has to be about maintaining their health for their, continuing maintaining their health. So I got that out to everybody, and people did appreciate it because they were not contacting the doctor because they didn't want to be a burden, so it was good that they're doing that. The sit and be fed and somatic classes are going really well. There's more people attending those that were actually attending the real one, so that's good. We had a meeting with some seniors at the CSS parking lot the other day. People just wanted a face-to-face get-together, so there's about six of us sitting there, socially distanced, and had a really good chat, and it was just good to be able to have a one-on-one discussion. And so we're just talking about how we're going to have to rethink the lunches too, because that's something that I think is going to be changing in the future. And we are also planning, the seniors and some of the youth have decided to get together to let the 2020 grads know that we're thinking of them. So we're going, we're getting a group of seniors to do up words of wisdom to the 2020 grads, and we're going to take their pictures and we're going to make up a slideshow and put it on the social media platforms that the students frequent. That apparently isn't Facebook, but we're going to put it on Facebook so everybody in the community can see what we're doing too. So it should be a fun thing. I've got some good positive feedback on the seniors that want to do it, so it should be fun. And I think that's all I have.
Hey, thank you, that's a lot. You know, usually when somebody gives out your phone number to random people to call, it's a lot of work gets involved in that, and I know when mine gets out there. But is it going well so far? Is everybody handling things really well and you have to contact with?
Yeah, there is, there, I noticed that the tension's getting a little bit more now. A lot of the seniors didn't mind being isolated, they're okay with that, but I'm noticing now that they're starting to feel a little bit more, I can't go out for coffee, I can't go see friends. So there's more people going onto the phone tree, and more phone calls that I'm just making just to connect. So, you know, but everybody's feeling that way. It's not just seniors that are feeling that way. I think everybody's getting tired of this. But it's a reality that we're all going to have to get used to for a while yet.
For sure. Excellent, thank you for your work. Councilor Herring.
Hey there, can everyone hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay, so in terms of update, not much. Just wanted to give a big shout out to the Wells Gray Outdoors Club, because there are tons of people out there using the Candle Creek Trails right now. We run into three or four people every time we're up there, and I think that's a tremendous sort of mental health and physical activity resource. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, I'm seeing some promising signs around the community business-wise. Hardware stores in town have, it's the first time I've actually had to wait outside of business because there was too many people in there for social distancing reasons, so that's really exciting. I think, I think things might be looking up economically despite what we're dealing with.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I was listening, talking to some of the auto parts guys today, because they're not selling a lot of industrial stuff, but every person in town is keeping ability working on all the projects and all the stuff that they had, they've been putting off for years and trying to get it done. So yeah, there are a few silver linings out there, we'll go with that. Councilor McKenzie, it's your turn. Can you hear me well?
I can, so.
Here we go, got you now.
You guys hear me there?
We can hear you now.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Blackwell. Yeah, I've been a quiet couple of weeks for me as well, just trying my best to practice slash promote the social distancing. It's tough for everyone to get used to this. Unfortunately, for the time being, this is the norm until we see some progress forward. Hopefully, it's in the near future, but been optimistic about that. Just trying to keep up on emails and the distancing. When my internet will allow it, that's a pretty bad service up here with tele, so I'll be looking to make a switch so I can keep this laptop working all the time here.
By the way, that's been a great one. Mask on's been terrific, just anytime.
Well, that, you know, I've signed up with them, but unfortunately, for about six weeks, we're on a waitlist. Unless we are just moving into this house, they will not come in.
Interesting.
So that has been my holdup, so as soon as this thing levels itself out a little bit, high on the list to get in here, but I've heard nothing but good things about your internet up in my neck of the woods here, so I can't wait.
I'm sure Councilor Taylor can't wait either, till something better comes along, because you've been working out of the office here now. Blackwell was now the last time forgotten, I agree, so. Yeah, and one more thing there, Councilor McKenzie, I believe your brother has organized a social distancing car show for this weekend?
Yes, he has for Saturday the night, and numbers are looking pretty good from what he's been telling me.
Yeah, that's what I've been seeing too. I think it would, we might be in the 60 to 100 range there, and it's got definite rules about staying in your, staying in your car. We're leaving them out in packs of about 20, and turning 11 on Saturday, we'll be touring most of the streets and neighborhoods in Clearwater over about an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, looking forward to it. With any luck, I could get my new pride and joy up to snuff and ready for Saturday.
Yeah, it's a new, it's a new old car, good luck with that.
Yeah.
Moving on, Councilor Sim.
Thanks very much. Yeah, I just want to comment on the CSS student video that came out today, which was really terrific, and you know, that's our junior council and student council who came together to kind of share some tips with students. I'm going to get all period. It's just really nice to see the kids pulling together. Same thing with Rast River, they did a really great video as well to their students and families, letting them know that they are missed, and you know, just a really nice cheer up one. Speaking of CSS and Rast River, we have some news. I think it was fairly well-known that Tracy Buck would be retiring as of July the 31st, so she will be leaving CSS, so that's going to be a tough farewell, but we're excited to welcome Lori Holmes to CSS. And yeah, so that's exciting. She did a bit of a practicum last year, she's really familiar with the school. She lives in Clearwater, which is also marvelous, and her two girls went through the school system here, so I think we're really fortunate. And filling her shoes down at Rast River Elementary is a teacher out of Kamloops, who's now been part of the vice principal pool, Leah Claire. I am trying to find out if this is from the Claire family, as in Dr. Claire in barrier, but she's really looking forward to coming to Clearwater, so I hope that that's going to be a great match as well. For Silgo, we had a meeting last week, we're trying to coordinate a Silgo speaker series and looking for some different sponsorship to kind of bring communities together to talk about new ideas, ways that communities are managing, you know, through this, how to navigate next steps, et cetera. So we're looking to see how that might be possible. I've also been on the tourism DC calls every week, so if you want to stab your eyes out and just get totally depressed, I'll share the link with you. But by all accounts, we're going to be in for a really tough haul, and I think that we have to have some hard discussions about how we move forward and where our community fits in with this. And I think that there is need for some serious shakeups. One of the more interesting stats is that $4 billion comes into British Columbia every year for domestic travel. That's DC people traveling. So that's a big deal. We just heard today that New Zealand and Australia are likely on travel lockdown until December, so that's going to be another impact to some of our ski resorts areas, et cetera. So yeah, they put out a really good survey that went out to all over British Columbia for tourism operators to respond to. They didn't get a huge response, the questions were really good, and I could see that this being a survey that we replicate locally. I know for me, I don't want to answer any surveys because the depression is too great, so to say it out loud, it's too much. But maybe now, as you know, some of the other government reports have come forward, it might be good to share, and it might be good to get that feedback so we know what's going on on the ground. And I think that is about it. I just, I have to say that I think our community is really doing well, and I appreciate the friendly people who are out there on the storefronts and just doing their best to, you know, say, we're going to, we're going to get through this, so thank you.
Yeah, all around town customer service, especially the restaurants that are reopening, has been fantastic, and people have been very good about treating them well, and being, I've seen very few cases of abuse or harassment or grumpiness even for that matter around town, and a lot of 20% tips and happy people out there in the community doing things. Councilor Taylor.
So I attended the first farmer's market this season, Saturday, extremely well organized. Everything was kind of laid out, making it kind of really easy for you to practice the physical distancing while enjoying some wonderful baked treats and coffee and all sorts of things from the vendors. I know they're really keen to try and get more vendors, so we can kind of keep the market going, so if you know people who could kind of contribute to that, please let go on and know. Yeah, second, Councilor Sim's comments about the Rast River video, it's kind of great to see these ways that people kind of reaching out to each other and stay connected during the time. Also kind of after your comments, Councilor Sim, on how well the community is doing just generally, and kind of very fast can see, yeah, the great service, you know, with great protocols, keeping customers and employees safe while still keeping the economy going a little bit in town for us, yeah. And yeah, congratulations to our director of finance on the audit, and there's kind of a lot of work goes into both managing the financial statements, but also the audits themselves, so congratulations on the key audit, and yeah, great to see.
Excellent. And your company, as you were coming here earlier today, has already set a work from home, new, not deadline, but extended sort of parameters for that.
Yeah, yeah, we expect to work from home, so.
Yeah, so, this is, Councilor Sim.
I just wanted to follow up with Councilor Frizzle, just on the seniors and some of their healthcare, because I really think that's something to keep an eye on. We've gone through this before when we had physician shortages, and that community perception of that they don't want to do it, and I hope that we as councilors, we can all share that out, that, you know, our local physicians care about our healthcare, and they want all of us to stay healthy, all of us to stay in contact. And then my final comment is, Councilor Frizzle, is, was there any talk about some of the seniors doing some of those Zoom virtual meetings with the physicians if they weren't comfortable, or is there a way that we can maybe facilitate some computer banks or doing something in the seniors' room? I don't know, I don't necessarily need an answer, but if people have some concerns, you know, I think that's a great junior council project with the cyber seniors to show them how to do Zoom meetings, et cetera. But I do care deeply about, as we all do, the health of our community and getting that message out and facilitating a meeting.
That is also a message that has been put out there, that if it is going to be a Zoom meeting and they're uncomfortable with that, that someone will come and help them set up. So they do know that that's an option. I also just wanted to, in reference to Councilor Taylor, the farmer's market, I'm going to be talking with Sandy West Wetterstrom, I can never remember her name properly. We're going to meet about a community table, where people that have lots of extra produce in their garden, that they can come and set up on one table, and they'll just, you know, will share, share the day, so it won't be just one person every Saturday having to sit at the table. So we're going to be working on that too, so things are happening.
Cooperative, some form of informal cooperative would be great there, because we definitely need more food vendors here in town. And I, and I, just on a personal note, I happen to know that the new market coordinator's birthday is tomorrow, and she'll be turning 35, so for both of those. Anyway, moving on to committee of the whole minutes, Councilor Herring, the recommendation there for your committee.
Yeah, so I'd like to move that the minutes of the Parks and Recreation Committee of the Whole meeting, held April 21st, to be received.
The second round for that, Councilor Frizzle, all those in favor, and that, I think, we'll call it passed. Anyway, committee of the whole reports, Councilor Sim, economic development. Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, I'm trying to find that, going back to that screen. There is a meeting coming up, I think it's on the 27th or whatever it says there.
8/18, we'll go with that.
Right. And Ms. Gru, I didn't know if there was an update for the CEB task force meeting, or if that's a bit later.
So we were just waiting to hear on the Dr. Bonnie Henry stuff, and then we'll be putting something else, so I'll be chatting with you about that.
Yeah, today, today or Thursday, we should hear some interesting stuff. I think after Thursday would be a great time to organize the next meeting pretty quick.
Yeah, a couple of the committee have actually called in and wanted to know when we're ready.
That, that's wonderful news, that's very, very exciting, thank you.
Yeah, in fact, to one of your points on that economic development, was on radio yesterday with the mayor of Tofino, and I listened to a couple other mayors that there are, his sort of a COVID committee that's coming out of their economic development groups, and I think that's maybe where he added Frizzle on the agenda. But yeah, I think a lot of committees, the empowerment that gives the local businesses for moving out of, onto the next phase of COVID temporary normal, it's not a new normal, is a good thing to, to maybe make this committee part of, for sure, so. Infrastructure, Councilor McKenzie, you have a, and next meeting to be determined, and there's two updates, is that what we're doing here, or you have, I think there's one, on the road strategy and the waste water.
So on the road strategy, the report came to us late March, we reviewed it myself and Mr. Videma, sent back a few comments, some of it wasn't fully flushed out to the work plan that we had, so we're hoping that they'll be able to do a presentation to council, or to the infrastructure committee on June, the second week.
Okay.
On that, and then the cell one, waste water is coming on really well, the project is, they've done really well, is that we have a liner in the mountain, and filled it up, and just checking that out to make sure it works and no leaks, and we'll carry on.
Okay, cool, and we'll determine whenever the next meeting is for Councilor McKenzie. Councilor Herring, the next one is yours.
Yeah, the next Parks and Rec meeting is June 16th.
We have, our parks are essentially ready to go right now, yeah.
They were opening the washrooms yesterday or today.
I had a question on that, is the Rory Sports Park washroom open at that?
Yes.
Is that open? Okay, cool.
Yeah, so the three areas, the three rooms that we have washrooms in will be open.
Yeah, okay.
If they weren't yesterday, they should be today. And we will be doing an extra cleaning in the evening, so that'll be a little bit of extra money that'll be required, we're clearing that up right now.
Okay, yeah, those. Okay. Yeah, those both were questions that I would have, by the general public. Question on Counselor Taylor.
Uh, next meeting is December 12.
Wow, well, well, standing committee reports, Joint Services Advisory Committee, or Frizzle.
The next meeting is Monday, May 11th.
Task Force, Counselor Taylor.
Oh, next meeting, May 12.
Do you have any virtual meetings for this bill?
Uh, we have been, but I've been listening to a slight visit as a sleep, like we talk about the trails coming down.
Lots, lots of interest on what's going on at the Lake Beach right now.
Yeah, that's true.
Counselor Sim, junior council, anything going on there?
Yeah, again, these kids are absolutely marvelous. They received their funding from Rotary to put in the water fountains. And then through Ms. Gru, they, the kids came and they said, hey, the community foundations is accepting grant applications. And so they took the money from Rotary and they're looking to maybe give some $50 to get one of the new water fountains at the Dutch Lake Community Center. So I want to thank Ms. Gru for working with her staff on checking the feasibility for that. But that's going to be a great addition just for all the different things that are going on. So that junior council is working hard to leave a legacy in this community and one of sustainability. So very grateful to them.
Excellent work for sure. Great, great group as usual. Of course, we work in group, Counselor McKenzie, next meeting is May 12.
May 12, that's correct. Yeah, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled for May 12 there. Yeah, that's correct.
That'll be fine. Another Zoom meeting. The Community Economic Development Task Force is Counselor Sim and we're going to, we've already spoken about that one. Next Tourism Well-Readed Meeting is actually tomorrow at noon. I think it's another virtual meeting. So it'll be interesting to get the perspective in the room on, or any rooms on that one. And we haven't had any well-prepared forest, community forest commission meetings. And we don't have anything pending. Just before we do Counselor Sim, at this particular point, I think the well-prepared rated forests has actually sort of suspended doing grants right now for, until we kind of get handle on things with that. So Counselor Sim, do you have a question?
I did. It was in relation to the Tourism Well-Readed Meeting. And it sounds as though you're attending tomorrow, likely going to be an important one. I'm just wondering if it's possible to sort of get some clarity on, I think that I've been hearing that there's going to be a lot of rollouts for focus on that, that local travel experience, the staycation is going to be really bumped up. But specifically, I'm really curious about how we start incorporating Clearwater as part of a tourism strategy. A lot, when this started, it was all around, you know, Well's Great Park because that was one of our greatest assets. But we've evolved. And I just, I'm hoping that we will be, the communities will be included as well as the whole North Thompson Valley.
Yeah, no, I had the same conversation with a couple of people that Clearwater, the experience of spending the day or the night or dining in central in Clearwater, the wrapping happens out with Clearwater. The Clearwater as a product is an important part of what we need to, to report. So I will push that one forward.
And especially with the new mountain bike trails as Counselor Herring. And we're going to be hearing some exciting news on that probably within the next week or so. You know, so there's, there's lots. So thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Yeah, and Counselor Herring has had some harrowing experiences of not sprinting completely.
Would not recommend it.
Hey, we're gone. No, we're gone.
We're not hearing no one. Can you hear me, Shelly?
Yeah, I can hear you. Mayor Blackwell?
Can't hear Mayor.
Three minutes, we're not, I will stay on chat.
So let's do the 40 minute thing on the phone.
Enter your participant ID. Please enter the meeting password. Follow us. You are in the meeting now. There are 10 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You have this on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk until that goes for at least.
Okay, now we have a mic issue, I think. A little bit of that. Okay, I think we're better there now. Okay, everybody hear us now? Yeah, shaking hands, thumbs up. Thank you. Where were we? We were on twelve flag protocol.
On my mic? Not on.
There you are. You're muted now.
Okay, so you have.
You're muted up there.
I don't, I don't have any, I don't make sense.
You did. Okay, so you know you're good on the phone.
Oh, okay, sorry. We're working before. Anyway, yeah, before you, a policy for flag protocol, flags are a symbol of honor and pride for Canadians. We have in the past been using our flag when half-mast is. However, I kind of recognized a little bit that it was a bit of intellectual knowledge. So if a policy gets put in place, then there's clear guidelines for staff on responsibilities when you do a half-mast, expectation for the policy, communication when we do do half-mast. Sometimes people realize why we're putting a flag at half-mast. They don't think that something really terrible's happened. And well, usually it is because of that hurry. But the reason why we are doing half-mast. And then the position of our flag within our council tables is often when people move them around, then they have to try to understand what position they go back in. And there is a protocol for that. The policy includes, under Appendix A, the first of things that are protocol for municipal government to do a half-mast on the flag. And then Appendix B, our dates that when your flag should fly somewhere else to sunset or in the Pacific across Canada. And the district does have flag, a flag inter for municipal hall, which is where we are, of two. We have a Canadian flag, provincial municipal flag. We have the provincial municipal on the same pool, which technically really shouldn't do. So we will look at budget for next year for that. Dutch Lake Beach has one flag, which is a federal flag, which works well for town to day and things like that. It's doing well. The Fire Hall has one. Ridge Mall Park has three. The Porkplex has one. And Centennial Hall has one. Centennial Hall is a power group building. So the recommendation to council is that a couple adopt the flag policy to, 2002, flag protocol as presented at the May fifth regular company.
Okay, do I have a mover and a second for that recommendation? Moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Herring. Any discussion? Questions? The nut, all those in favor? And that is passed. Now, moving on to bylaws. Bylaw number 236, 2020, 2020, 24 Financial, five-year financial plan. The recommendation is that the District of Clearwater bylaw number 236, 2020, be adopted. Do you have a mover and a second on that? Moved by Counselor Herring, seconded by Counselor Baffert. Any discussion before I do this? Nope. Okay, then I read the herefore and wheretos. The District of Clearwater, 2020 five-year financial plan by law number 236, 2020, a bylaw to adopt the 2020 to 2024 five-year financial plan. Where is section 165 of the community charter requires that council shall adopt a five-year financial plan. Now, therefore, the council of the District of Clearwater in an open meeting assembles and acts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the District of Clearwater bylaw number 236, 2020, 2020 to 2024 five-year financial plan. All those in favor? Okay, and that is passed. Now, moving on to item B, which is bylaw number 137, 2020, 2020 annual tax rate. And I'm sure we're going to have some discussions and stuff on this.
Sure, thank you Mayor Blackwell. In the staff report, we have given two options to raise the required revenue amount. In the financial plan that was just adopted, we have municipal tax revenue requirement of 2.641 million. And so how to distribute that tax burden amongst the classes is what we decide in the tax rate bylaw. So there's probably a thousand different combinations on how we could distribute that. But we've given two basic options. The first option would see a 0% increase for classes four, five, six, and seven. And if we did that 0%, in order to meet revenue requirements, we would have to do a residential increase of 2.16. And that would also follow for class one, class three, class eight, and class nine. And if option two would see a 1% increase for the business classes four, five, six, and seven, and that would require residential class one, class three, class eight, and class nine to increase 1.61%. So those are the options, the two basic options to choose from.
And then option three is in the back. What is, Counselor Baffert has a question. Go ahead.
Quick question. Given the financial plan figure didn't change, on April 21st, the five and six options for residential was 1.8 and then 2.02 was still a zero for business. How do we end up at 1, 2.16?
It did change. We took $20,000 off of the financial plan requirement, some municipal taxation requirement. And then we have a little tiny change in the Bayonne B tax rate because we estimate the Bayonne B tax rate, $2.00, until the very last minute, what the actual tax rates are going to be based on others' pattern. We made a small minor change, but the other change was the $20,000 in the financial plan.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Baffert?
Yeah, yeah, of sorts. I mean, not in detail. It's tough doing it this way. But I understand, I understand some of the change. It was just a curiosity thing for me when we kept some of the classes the same and yet the percentage figure changed. When those, I never did quite understand the 1.8 or the 2.02 when they were both the same overall budget figure. But I could catch up on that after.
I think we identified that that was a rounding error. So it shouldn't have been zero. It should have been 0.5 on the 1.8 one. So the business tax rate under the, under the 1.8 was actually 0.5. So it was just the digit was lost in the printout.
Okay.
Yeah. So the two, it was two and zero and 1.85 and a 0.5, I think.
Okay, so what, what of the tables was an error? The one with the 1.8?
Yeah, it should have had a 0.5 difference.
Okay, so do you have further, Counselor Taylor, or something you're trying to?
No, no.
Okay. Any further questions on it, Counselor Sim?
Thank you, Mike. And I really want to appreciate the amount of time for staff as well as council in deliberating this. And just to stress that, a lot of these discussions have gone through with a focus on a contingency for next year and moving forward. It was really good to hear from our auditor, who, you know, talked about what will be, what will be needed, let's say, for the sports plex to operate, what will be needed for any retrofitting with any of our public works, et cetera. So I certainly stand by the thoughtfulness and all the details that went into it. What I do want to know, if it's possible, is we talk a lot about percentages, but when we break it down into a dollar figure, what would this actually look like? So for example, the 2.16, if I remember correctly, that works out to be an additional $54 per household. Is that, you know, what I'm looking at?
I think approximately. I'm not, I'm not.
Per, per household based on an average household credit of over $300,000? Is that?
I think it was $2,275,000.
It was, a little 250 or 75, I think.
I can find the spreadsheet.
Because where this is important for me is that we do have some, some costs that we put into the budget. And my reflection on it is, how can we share this amongst the community? Because it's the community that's going to move us forward. So that's $54, and that's per year per household on average. And I understand, it's not monthly, it's per.
Per year, yeah, per year. Yeah. And on the commercial side, because of some of the government changes to school taxes and things like that, at zero the tax rate, unless their assessment has gone up significantly out of business, they will definitely be paying less in taxes this year than they did last year. So that's on the other side of that. So people would want to know that as well.
And I appreciate that. But also, those businesses are faced with the same position that we are, which is looking to how to maybe modify and retrofit what they do in order to move forward. And why I ask the comparison of what the per household is, is because offhand, how many businesses are on, are part of that class six that would have to share amongst that, that increase there?
Yeah, I did that a few meetings ago. So that was, there's like 56 or 59 commercial properties living in Clearwater.
Yeah. And so to me, I just, I voice that out loud, is how do we, how do we share what we all need to do to move forward, you know, in a position of strength?
Any further questions with staff?
Mayor Blackwell, I did want the, on the average household. If we did a 2% increase of residential, and a 2.16 is what we're discussing right now, it's a little bit different. But the average residential property in Clearwater is $243,000. And that would increase to $24 a year, about $2 a month.
Percentages are not our friend. Those are definitely our friends. So, Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you were paying 1,500 a year, a 2% increase would be $30 on that per year. That just, so depending on how far either side of 1,500 is related to your tax rate.
Okay, so we have three recommendations. Does council wish to move one of the recommendations? Counselor Baffert?
I just, I'm not sure I'm going to move one, but I'd just like, I'll speak my bit here for just a minute. For me, I realize that businesses have some reformer relief coming. The overall tax rate for businesses, if you look at it with hospitals and the other stuff, is that option one was 10.56, option two was 9.9 reduction. Even for residential, there'll be a slight increase when your overall tax rate, when you consider hospitals and schools and everything else that's going into it. I just think if you look at the food bank stats, amount of people that have their job affected and are still trying to support their families, and the concerns that we have about people being able to pay taxes and stuff, I think every, treating everybody fairly, in my opinion, would be the right place to go. I think people are supporting the businesses in Clearwater quite well. I was out to four or five different businesses. Home Hardware is doing a great job. Roanoke is doing a great job as far as letting people in. So I would be in favor of option two, to be quite honest. I think in just sharing some of the burden that we have. In essence, we did try to reduce the business tax a little bit last year, I think, or the year before by 0.1%. It's not like we aren't recognizing the businesses. And I think people here are doing really well and supporting the local businesses. That's just where I'm at. I believe we all need to share the burden, not just look at one particular segment of the population.
Counselor, do you want to move that first? Or I'll let Counselor Sim talk to that first.
Just because we don't have a motion or a second, I'm still asking questions. Is we thought the breakdowns that are 2.16 would maybe be $30 per household? Do we have any of that similar data for what a business increase would look like? And I certainly, I really deeply appreciate what Counselor Baffert is saying. And I just note that not all businesses are thriving because there's a lot of businesses that aren't open right now either. And one of our, one of our strategies, top strategic priorities was that economic development and how to help our businesses invest, move, and grow it. So, I mean, we're talking fractions. But I'd like to know what that average would be for business increase.
At 25% or?
At 1%.
At 1%?
At 1%. If on a $350,000 commercial property, that's where the $56 is. And that's just the municipal portion of taxes. And the other, like the school taxes, et cetera, they've gone down, right? So that would be just on the municipal portion. And a commercial property value at $600,000, but 1% increase. And a commercial property value at $600,000, but a 1% increase would be about $95 per year.
Okay, so, Council Sim?
Supplemental on that. Where I'm concerned at is where a lot of our hotels fit on, in on that. Because if they are valued at far more than that $600,000, that, that's who I'm looking at right now.
Or for a 3.5 million, for an average, of a property like that.
Right.
So someone, some new developers will be able to tell you that. The number of owners is there or not there yet?
Anybody else have questions? So, Council of Bradford has brought for option two. Do you want to make that a move on, or?
I'll move, I'll move that option and see whether they get a second or not. My opinion is, was already stated kind of a thing. I just think thanks to better option across the board right now. Personally, otherwise, I think we're just saying that everybody in Clearwater has to support them. And I think it's fair, or I'll move it.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd had some more information.
Yeah, just on the 3.5 million dollar property, it would be about $550 increase on a 1% increase.
So, Council of Bradford has moved option two. Please watch for second option two to share the burden. Okay. I don't mind the idea, but you also have option one and option three. Does somebody else wish to move a different option? They're moving option one, Council Sim, because you're on mute.
I will move option one.
Okay, do we have a second or an option one?
I'll, I'll second option one.
Further discussion on option one. On that one, I'll just state as well, we also have to recognize, and maybe I should have brought this up sooner, that a huge number of our businesses are operating on residential property. So this isn't going to actually affect them on doing a zero on business taxes. So, yeah, that's another thing to consider. But I do, I do support option one. Any further comments or questions?
I mean, I, I could go with either. I think my preference is option one. Really just go around kind of maintaining our economy and kind of doing best to support the businesses and support the employers that will also then support the community. So I think that's my preference, but it's, you know, it's so close in the numbers, I could go either way.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, the distribution, because of that, that's the higher number of residential properties involved. As well, and the federal and the business governments have both pointed out that they are trying to rescue citizens this time, not Wall Street, that level of base, as much as they are trying to do. Any further comments or discussions on this? Not all in favor of option one?
Yes.
Or, Lyle, you go yes on that?
That was a yes on one, that's correct.
Okay, so that passes. So, there we go. So we're going on.
Bradford votes in all.
And you, Barry, do you wish to oppose that, or are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, I didn't vote to oppose it.
You oppose it and we'll have that noted on the, okay. Thank you for your consideration, everyone, on that. It's definitely tough times to be making this decision. I'm really proud of the staff and all of us got down to the numbers that we did on this. I think it sends a fairly good message, having seen a lot of tax announcements across, up for two weeks ago, that we're doing our best to do our part. So, let me move on to the recommendations, is that correct? Or the rate of the bylaws, of the, of the, yeah, the bylaw. Okay, so there are four recommendations. Recommendation that the District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rate Bylaw, number 237, now will be figured out, our annual tax rate, 2020, given the first reading. Move by Council Taylor, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Oh, second that, okay. Council Prizzle on this one, are you ready for the two and three readings? Councilor McKenzie? What page is the article?
Page one.
Okay. I had it circled, there we go. Next package. District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Bylaw Rate, bylaw number 237, 2020, a bylaw to establish 2020 annual tax rate. Whereas pursuant to section 165 of the Community Charter, Council has prepared a five-year financial plan for the period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2024. And whereas the five-year financial plan as presented has been considered approved by Council and whereas it is necessary under section 197 of the Community Charter to establish tax rate to raise the revenue for municipal purposes identified in year 2020 of the five-year financial plan. And whereas to meet its taxing obligation in relation to other local governments or public bodies, certain amounts are to be collected for the year 2020 by means of rate established by the District of Clearwater. Now therefore, the Council of the District of Clearwater, in an open meeting, assembled an act as follows. This bylaw may be decided as District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rate, bylaw number 237, 2020. All those in favor?
Yes.
And that passes. We get asked, nobody opposed? Okay. We have recommendations two and three. Somebody would like to move?
I think that we need to speak, yeah?
Oh, that would be great, Council Taylor. Council McKenzie, would you like to second that?
I'll second that, please.
Thank you, Council McKenzie. District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rates, bylaw number 237, 2020, a bylaw to establish 2020 annual tax rates. Whereas pursuant to section 195, number 165 of the Community Charter, Council has prepared a five-year financial plan for the period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2024. And whereas the five-year financial plan as presented has been considered approved by Council and whereas it is necessary under section 197 of the Community Charter to establish tax rate to raise the revenue for municipal purposes identified in the year 2020 of the five-year financial plan. And whereas to meet its taxing obligation in relation to other local governments or public bodies, certain amounts are to be collected for the year 2020 by means of rate established by the District of Clearwater. Now therefore, the Council of the District of Clearwater, in an open meeting, assembled an act as follows. This bylaw may be decided as District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rates, bylaw number 237, 2020. All those in favor?
Yes.
Council McKenzie, I hear you in favor on the phone. And then we have recommendation four, that the District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rate, bylaw number 237, 2020, be adopted. Does somebody wish to move this one? Councilor Taylor moves, Councilor Sim second. And District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rate, whereas, a bylaw to establish 2020 annual tax rate. Whereas pursuant to section 165 of the Community Charter, Council has prepared a five-year financial plan for the period of January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2024. And whereas the five-year financial plan as presented has been considered approved by Council and whereas it is necessary under section 197 of the Community Charter to establish rate to raise revenue for municipal purposes identified in year 2020 of the five-year financial plan. And whereas to meet its taxation obligation in relation to other local governments or public bodies, certain amounts are to be collected for the year 2020 by means of rate established by the District of Clearwater. Now therefore, the Council of the District of Clearwater, in an open meeting, assembled an act as follows. This bylaw may be decided as District of Clearwater, 2020 Annual Tax Rate, bylaw number 237, 2020. All those in favor of adoption?
Yes.
And Council McKenzie verifies on the phone that he's voted in affirmative.
I would like to comment that now you don't need a special meeting on May the 7th because under the new Minister of Order 183, you're allowed to adopt the bylaw on the same day as the 3rd reading. So we won't require a special meeting on Thursday.
On Thursday, so, yeah. And congratulations to staff and to everyone involved on this because this has been quite a deliberation and the fact we got to this point is excellent work for everybody involved. We will get messaging out. I have a press release on my desk, so we're going to start working on messaging, Council Sim.
Yeah, just on that, thank you very much for talking about the messaging. And I'm just really hoping, and I really feel this for this council, is that it felt as though our taxes are an investment in the community as a whole and the development in the next step. And, you know, really stressing that, you know, percentages are somewhat leading. And I know Mayor Blackwell, you'll do a terrific job about calling this together and being able to communicate those dollar amounts as opposed to the percentage amount.
Yes. Dollar, yeah, highlight the dollar amount per hundred thousand or per average household versus, yeah.
And the fact, and just to stress it, is that this is an investment in the community. It's, I know that sometimes communities pay the tax burden and all of that, but to me, this year is a real investment. And it's investment in our people, in our infrastructure, and our new vision moving forward. I, I feel that passionately on behalf of the whole council.
Yeah, for sure. There, people are practically writing notes, I think, that are, so. Okay, any further questions or comments on passing that? Seeing none, we're really weird on this data, nobody's basis to see what's going on. Moving on to correspondence, response for BP Transit, item A, BP Transit, Annual Operating Agreement. There is a recommendation. Anybody wish to speak to this, or anybody like to move it?
I, no, I don't want to move it. I want to know if we want to sign this.
Well, that would be the official counsel with it, a little bit. Further, yeah.
So we actually already engaged in a, an operating agreement with them, this is the annual one.
Okay, so we already have an agreement, yeah.
If you still want to sign it, you have to go back and come back with a report to give you an understanding of what that would mean. Would operate the current operator.
Well, one thing I would really like to ask before we can forward on the signing is, I want to go through another year where our transit communication has so many gaps to it. So that's one thing that's important for me. I think 868 just needs to be muted. That's the feedback. So for, for me is I want to tighten up some of those promises that have been, have been given. And I was just really fascinated by kind of that bottom line and being tied into that for a longer stretch of time. I just wrote up for, for.
Can you just give a second here?
So, I think before all of this stuff hit, and I'm not using a, we were actually getting quite a bit of information from transit and getting to put up with community. One thing that they still haven't done, and I agree with them, they still haven't changed it so that you know which parts you're changing. And I'm not really sure what the goal of it is, but we will continue to push that. The only one other thing that Mr. Shepherd and I are trying to understand and get definitive after on is because they went to no fairs for the last couple of months, and we are going back to fairs soon first. Who is going to be that? Is it going to be the District of Clearwater, or is our completely transit, or the government can give us some kind of an age on that?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, and it's been asked in a lot of jurisdictions, for sure. Maybe we can add that on the call that it is full for Thursday. Council Sim?
So until some of those questions are identified, you know, I want to call the COVID card and say that there's just been a delay. I have this hard, difficult feeling, I'd like to get this straightened out and I don't want to be beholden to something. But if staff feels that that's not the right course of action, that's fine too. But we, we are in this and the dollar figures are substantial. And we've asked for some significant points and I'd like to see them addressed in operating.
So this agreement, Action Card table first, was actually under way.
Early on the way, yeah. They were late in getting it to us, as you can see.
Okay, so technically, we're already actually operating on last term agreement?
Yeah. They do it on that increase, with those increase in it, yeah.
Okay, so we're still technically operating under the last term agreement anyways. Is it reasonable to put this back to them, or is there timeline?
We can, I'm not sure.
Then we're going to get any answers, are there any changes at this point?
Any changes, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I guess that we require just tabling this for now. Is that worth to do that? Is anybody else just want to move the recommendation? Or does it, others also want answers on this? Well, I'm in favor of going ahead, but, you know, considering the times right now that everybody is under incredible levels of stress, including BP Transit, as we know. But if anybody else wishes to move the recommendation, we can do that. But we just table it for now until the next meeting.
Well, I agree with Council Sim on that. I'd like to push it back a little bit and look into it a little more myself.
Okay. We have two people who wish to just table this for the next meeting and hopefully get some answers in the meantime. Okay, so how do we do that? I'm tabled, are you going to walk us?
You just, have let somebody, nobody moved a second of this, we know.
No, so, okay, we're not doing anything, we're just not taking action on that one. So we're just going to leave this one for the next one. Okay, well, there we go. Next one, item B, Lake Country. It starts with deferred performance payment, decision of council. Questions on this, while Councilors send things to you first?
No questions, but I really love this letter and I have felt the same. And I wouldn't mind echoing it, I don't understand. I, I think it's a marvelous letter.
Yeah, I agree. Credit cards and mortgage rates. I do know that, that locally interior savings has opened up a grant program for urgent grants, for charities, and all public. That's the kind of banking that we would like to see around here. You, Councilor Sim? Anybody else to comment on the letter first? Want to make a motion for a letter of support and repair, or? Or you just like the letter?
I need to do a resolution to staff, directing us to prepare the letter for you.
Is that what you wish, Councilor Sim, or anybody else?
Yeah, yeah.
I stand in favor of that, okay? So will we second on that? We have somebody, Council Prizzle seconds that. All those in favor?
Yeah.
And that seems to pass. Okay, good. Correspondent information items. BP Transit, any comments on this? Okay. Oh, sorry.
17C.
17C, the one I added and I've already forgotten. Somebody can please speak to this because I completely, we get the annual Canada Day grant that we can apply for. Obviously, Canada Day celebrations won't go as normal, but let this group speak to it.
So we're providing, we received this yesterday, so that's why it's on table today, 3:59 in the afternoon. It was a shame that they're going to allow us to, if we want to keep our money, we have two choices. We would postpone the planned events to a date between usual celebration periods up until March 3rd, 2021, provided the event is the same as described in our planning application. Or two, we may modify the nature of our events, such as organizing a virtual gathering. Virtual events must take place during the celebrated calendar period. I spoke to Abubay, President of Rotary. And Rotary would still like to carry on, even if they were to do Canada Day on Labor Day, they want to do a celebration. So that just means that we either keep the grant and they utilize funding, which is what they were going to do because you can use it for activities and Canada Day case, but you cannot use it for barbecues twice. Or funding back and they carry on and do it without our support.
Council of Bradford?
In reading all the questions and answers, worst case scenario, if nothing happened before March 31st, you'd be able to deduct the amount from the grant that you used for the planning purpose of it, but you'd just have to return the rest of it.
Okay. We're talking about the no by May 8th if we're going to Council.
Council Prizzle?
How, how much was the grant?
It's 600 or 650, 650.
650. No.
We've got around 2,000, but the last couple of years, they do, we haven't changed up our event too much.
Changed this year. Council of Bradford again, and Council of Stanford.
If it's, if it's 650 was the grant purpose, given it was 2,000 years past and aren't going to get any promotional material because they said they can't send any out, is it worth the effort of staff time to track it all and do everything else and do the bookkeeping on it? and do the, the bookkeeping on it for the $650 or should we just not worry about it?
Well, last year we turned it over to Rotary and they provided us the receipt. Now that would be, uh, I don't know, I don't think it's the best offer.
It's not, the, the reporting is, or, yeah, not like some grant work.
Council Sim, do you have something on that or?
Yeah, just to follow up with Council Banford, is I personally think we should definitely keep it and move forward. And, you know, if anything, we leverage some of our, um, event money that we have and make it bigger and better once we come out of this. I think this is, this is something really worthy to celebrate and can be a fantastic event. And I will take that $650 for sure, and let's make a big deal and support Rotary.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, just going to go ahead with that.
No, I'll go back to the nothing.
We're just going to go ahead with that for now and, and hopefully we can do something Canada Day or Rotary can't for too long. And, uh, yeah, add to it. Lots of good ideas coming out there. Okay, moving back to item A, letter from BC Transit, um, about COVID, ironically, any comments? No, moving on to, which is letter from Daniel Franklin, Reaffordable Housing Project, Canada. Comment? No, oh, sorry, do we have comment? Hey, Council Erin, and then Council, yeah, sorry, you're back on top of each other. So, we're hearing a lot of comments.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, and I just reading this letter, I, I wanted to point out that some of what is in here is not within the municipal purview. There, you know, things like regulating business size, or sorry, building size. We just went down that rabbit hole and found out that's a BC building code restriction and it's not even a specific restriction, right? It's just caused by safety requirements, things like hallway sizes and exits. So to, to me, I saw that this emails being maybe a symptom of a wider problem, and that's people not understanding what the municipal role is in building inspection and the elimination of red tape in particular. I, I heard from a local business person in the last few weeks who was very frustrated by building permits, basically, understanding what he had to do for his, his building, but it was nothing we could control at all. It was all the provincial building code. So I, I just think we maybe, I don't, I don't even know what this, this group wants, but it's aimed at the wrong place.
Okay, um, anybody else?
Um, I would just, and I agree with Council Herring for sure. My only possible response back would be to just remind them of so much that isn't within, like, the new building code. And that is where some of their pressure points are, because we, we were vigorously investigated this option, but they need to apply their, um, their attention to, to the government in, in different means that could bring this into a reality. But I also found it was really important that we noted about the vacation rentals, et cetera. I, I was intrigued by this letter, but, um.
Yeah, as, as Council Herring said, we've been down this rabbit hole and, uh, and we weren't just the, the, uh, the other way. So, yeah, a little bit, uh, good information item, but yeah, aim higher. Uh, no notice of a motion, other business, uh, Council Sim, 28, move it. Is it transition or what are we going to vote for? Sorry, what are we, oh, sorry, Miss Group.
Um, we forgot to mention that we do need a motion before we close the vote, uh, to separate our financial, our audit and financial statements.
Oh, right. No, we need a motion to, that's our, uh, audit and financial statements as presented.
I'll move that.
Oh, Council Taylor will move that, seconded by Council Erin. All those in favor?
Yes.
That is passed, yes, excellent job. These things that we need to do, yeah, this is, okay, so, 28, Council Sim.
So, yes, and Mayor Blackwell, you had summarized it perfectly, is that purpose of this is to, to roll in and sort of post pandemic community development into the economic, uh, community economic development task force. And, and just start weaving in the fact that we are looking at co, post-COVID or, you know, transitional strategy and putting that as, as part of our economic development, um, purview. Um, and the second thing is, is I guess we'd look to council, is that, I mean, we're expecting some really great news, um, great news as far as I'm concerned from Dr. Bonnie Henry today, the premier tomorrow, probably today. Uh, Mayor Blackwell's alluded to that as well. And I think if we start to move, maybe expand those, those bubbles, is that what, I would really like the district to stick with physical distancing and, and creating that social connection. We've been intertwining the two, but that social distancing has a negative impact on where we need to go. So all of our strategies will all be about the physical distancing and it's not about that social. And we need to do it because if anybody else feel the angst when you go shopping and it feels uncomfortable and you kind of feel like you're doing something wrong at times. And that sense of the physical distancing, it becomes more clinical and more of just a strategy of business practice. Um, I, I just throw that out there for consideration for people and how we move forward on this.
Yeah, for sure, and then Dr. Henry got asked, this was yesterday or today, um, and I bet she asked to it, but basically, can you have a bonfire in your backyard, people five feet apart or six feet apart? Um, and, uh, and she certainly has answers to those questions, but yeah, that's okay, you know, it's fine understanding. Yeah, the whole, how, how does that interact with business and how do we move forward? If you don't know, the District of Clearwater has, like, the glass shields and stuff, and it's basically reopening the office here. Once, but we're not going until, we're not jumping in on that one until the law says that that's okay to do that. Yeah, I think it applies to all the, we need to do those things and, uh, figure out. I would, yeah, I'm uncomfortable with being in spaces like the grocery store with each other or getting the box. Because I'm comfortable again, how it's going to work for the next year.
And that's why I gave the focus on why we need to integrate that social connection and move that away from the distancing. Is that we really just keep that physical distancing, that's our, and if that is our, that is our tagline for, you know, moving forward. So, and help people transition.
Yeah, fair, fair, Council Prizzle?
I just wanted to note that in all my communications with the seniors, I never use social distancing. I always say physical distancing, making a very strong point on that, because it's important. We need to be physically distant, but we need to connect socially.
That's an excellent counter, you just said it right there, Council, oh, we got a hand on Council Sim. Oh, or is that, is that a flaw? It's a flaw, okay, it's a flaw, okay. Any further comment? Is, Council, do we have any hopes, Council Sim?
I just want to make sure that we're fine moving that post-COVID strategy to move into the economic development task force.
I, I think it's going to be the number one topic of conversation for that group anyways. I don't have a problem with the, the community being empowered to do that through business. Um, anybody else?
So part of our, um, uh, community economic development strategy with the grant that we got is community crime listing. Um, as I've, I never met for four or three, but obviously will change it. And I have to go with 19, one.
You can share with me catastrophes, yeah.
So they, so we do have that funding ability, so that's really good, so I appreciate your comments on that.
Yeah, and then I have a feeling that more funding for transition will be coming down from the province and through other funding sources to help us with that. But if we're up and running, just like many other communities I've heard about, with the team in place, all the better.
And I share that at this moment, because I really do feel that in the next few days, as we hear that, by having this discussion here, it, it really, um, gives the mayor that power to say, we've already been talking about this, we're ready to start talking. But the community knows that, you know, it's, we're ahead of the game, we're there, we're so there with them.
Excellent.
Yeah, cool.
Uh, the public isn't here, do you receive any questions or comments from the public?
No emails.
No emails, no questions, um, maybe we'll have to just go online. Maybe we should start reading Facebook comments or, or YouTube comments.
Well, we did push out yesterday to remind people that they could send in, um, on Friday as well, to remind people they could send in questions for help.
Good, good, nice one. Uh, we've ordered out in camera, uh, motion to adjourn. So moved by Council Taylor, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, appreciate all your work, everyone.
Yeah.